Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Lee School Committee meeting. It is Tuesday, January 18th at seven o'clock. We are officially in 2020, 2022. We are all in a virtual meeting tonight per Governor Baker's mandate suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law C 30A Section 20, this meeting will take place virtually via Zoom. I would like to call this meeting to order pursuant to Mass General Law C 30A Section 20. I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. And I would like to invite all of those that are avail- that are able to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The mission statement of the Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can I trouble you for our first roll call, please?
Mr. Robyn.
Here.
Mrs. Kuscherak.
Here.
Ms. Larmen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Strickler.
Here.
And Mrs. Wadsworth.
Here.
And I'm noting that Mr. Kennis is not present.
Perfect. Thank you, Brenda. First thing on our agenda is approval of the December 14th, 2021 Lee School Committee meetings. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept that. Oh, sorry, Betsy. The December 2021 meeting minutes from school committee.
Did you get that, Brenda? We had a motion from Nicole and a second from Betsy. Any discussion? Okay, Brenda, could your roll call us, please?
Mr. Robyn.
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscherak.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Strickler.
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth.
Yes.
All right. The next thing up on our agenda is public input, and in Randy's absence, I'm going to do his little speech. Members of the public are invited to address the committee at this time. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school committee. Carrie Wade, I see your hand is raised.
Hi, my name is Carrie Wade. I am a high school mathematics and special education teacher at Lee Muddlin High School. I've worked in Lee since 2006, and I have recently had some conversations with Principal Brigenti and Superintendent Richard about the possibility of a school puppy. And so I was just hoping to throw in my two cents for the school committee. I have offered to foster the puppy in my home with my two boys. I have a fifth grader and a sixth grader at the elementary school. I understand that there are a lot of kinks that need to be worked out, a lot of discussions that need to be to happen in order for this to go forward. I also did just want to let the school committee know that I'm not doing this lightly. I have 30 years of experience in pet care. My family owned a kennel. I am fully aware of the issues and the things that can pop up. But as an educator, this day and age in the schools, this is an amazing opportunity that's being presented to the Lee Public Schools, and I feel that it would be in our best interest to see this through, to really see what our options are, what we can do with this. I really just hope that, that, you know, this committee takes the time to ask all of the questions and get all of the possible information that they need before they make a decision for this. I, you know, it's hard to get the kids excited about anything these days. And I think that this might be what we need to get kids excited to be in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Anybody else? Like to share during public comment? I don't see any hand raises. Mike, do you have anybody in? No?
Nope, nothing, nothing visible now.
Okay. All right, next thing, oh, wait a minute, I gotta scroll my agenda. Hold on a second. Next thing on our agenda is our student representative report. I know I saw Emma on here somewhere. There she is. Hi, Emma, welcome.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. I always just check every time I'm on a Zoom because sometimes you can't. I feel like it's been a while since I've been here, so hi, everyone. First of all, this is just my opinion. This isn't a student opinion, but I love the puppy idea. I'm just gonna put that out there. But even though I know, like, the superintendent said this tonight, about the principals, it's the start of the second semester, which is good for everyone, but for me, it's especially kind of crazy because it's my last semester in high school, so that's weird to think about. So even though there's some new things going on with second semester, new classes, new grades, all of that, as students, we're still continuing a lot of the same things. House activities are obviously still ongoing. We were going to try and redo our winter one. That was meant to be before break, but we got a little extended break. So instead, we're gonna kind of rework it from holiday into just winter fun. We will probably do another kind of charity thing. We did the food drive before. We don't know if we'll do that again or rework it, but that is still the plan. As for student government, same kind of thing. We're gonna continue what we've been working on, which is a few different things, but we do have some fundraiser ideas that we might do for still planning to add benches to the courtyards with the help of money the seniors raised last year. He is, I know there are new, some new school committee members. I don't know if you heard about that idea, but that is something we really love to do. But that'll obviously be a little bit more finalized come springtime when we can put them in and there's not two feet of snow on the ground. Because we know there is right now. And obviously, all the students are really happy that sports are back happening again. That's really good. I know I have a lot of friends who play basketball. We're happy about that. All the other sports too. And the drama program, being able to do performances and concerts, all of that kind of thing, really great too. We're super happy for that. I know everyone was just really glad to get that back up and going today, because I think both teams have a basketball game, so I had to hear about that today in school. And trying and getting a ton of new stuff going on, kind of continuations, but that I just because I do know that there are, oh, and for anyone who had, who doesn't know me, my name is Emma. I'm one of the student representatives. There's also another Emma who you may see sometimes, so easy enough to keep the name straight. But yeah, that is all I have for today. Very long.
Thank you so much, Emma, for that update. I think we're all happy that we can get some sense of normalcy back into place. So thank you. Next thing up on our agenda is the chair report, and the only thing I have to say on my chair report, and I hope the whole school committee will help me in congratulating Andrea Wadsworth. She is our new MASC president. As of January 1st, she took over. That is really exciting for us because we are a very small school district way out in Berkshire County. So to have Andrea be the president of MASC is very exciting for us. It's an opportunity that we are very, very lucky to have. So congratulations, Andrea. And we are very excited to be a very, very small school district with somebody of some great importance on the, on the, on the big chair. So thank you very much for putting your name in the hat and for being up there on that pedestal and representing our little tiny school district up there in the big seat. So congratulations.
Thank you so much, Andrea and the whole board. I'm super excited. Friday, Thursday night, I fly out to Washington DC and we, I spend my first weekend advocating for Massachusetts in this role. So Lee Public Schools will be listed in all the literature as we represent nationwide. So we'll be at the National School Board Association this weekend.
That's really very cool. That's very exciting for our little school to get that kind of press. So thank you very much. So that's exciting. Yay. So that's all I have on my, on my, on my chair report for, for this, for, for today. So the next thing I have on my list is moving on to the superintendent report for Michael Richard.
Thank you, Ms. Larmen. Congratulations, Andrea. I know that between, hopefully between you and I, we've got some pretty good representation at the state level and we'll be able to affect some real positive change and, and while certainly Chairperson Larmen is not wrong in referring to us as a little district, that doesn't mean we can't have a big bite and make, and affect some really positive change. So, so congratulations to, to you. I will say that, that we, early I did, I wonder if it's, it's your influence perhaps, Andrea. I texted Commissioner Riley this morning and he called me back within about a minute and a half, which was some kind of remarkable. So maybe we are making a name for ourselves. Anyhow, I don't want to bore you with those, that silliness. Let's get down to, uh, let's get down to business here and give you a quick enrollment update. As you can see here, we're up to 637 students, so we're holding, we're holding steady. And I will tell you that, that on, I guess I may as well not sort of keep secrets. I will say that on this, the issue of enrollment is what I was texting the commissioner about, and it was concerns honestly about equity of school choice and whether all districts are following the real rules around school choice and a little bit of concern of whether we're at a competitive disadvantage. Because I believe that we are following all the rules and, and so I, I shared some ideas with him. He's gonna look into it and get back to me. I'll keep the board posted. But, you know, we are an attractive school district and we follow the rules and we're doing things the right way. And I'd like to think that all of our colleagues are also doing the same. Whatever, whether they're, they're not, I just want to hope that they are and move, move from there, but, but we're doing okay. Here's the breakdown of, of grades and enrollment and, you know, these, when we look at kindergarten and first grade, those numbers are concerning to us as we look forward. You know, as, as a, as a district, we wonder whether some of that is due to families still keeping their kids home where we wouldn't know that they are out there. So we're gonna, we, we've talked about whether we need to do some more, some more advertising generally to make sure that we're capturing families who, who maybe, you know, certainly not in kindergarten, in homeschool, we know if they've submitted homeschool applications that they should have done that. But Special Ed is doing child fine for sure. But I see, Mrs. Wadsworth, you've got your hand raised.
Just a quick question, a, a comment. I think school choice should be unfunded and still allowed, and that way we can stop cannibalizing each other's school districts. And it would make a huge difference, at least on the western side of the state. The eastern side is not as much. I got a question about kindergarten. Is that tracking with the trends of births? Do we know, Mike? Like, what, do, do you know what the five-year projection is? Will it level out?
Yeah, so I haven't, I haven't gotten the live birth data yet, but that's on the, that's on the list of things, actually. It's part of actually the strategic plan is analyzing those live birth data. So when I get those, I'll make sure I'll share it out with the, with the committee and let you know. But my guess is it's, it's not, that's a significant drop from what I've seen. So I think there may be families who are, who are keeping their kids home until either, you know, masking is, is gone, or whether they just feel like the pandemic has, has rolled through and is, you know, truly, truly, it's not gonna be gone forever, but that it's a more manageable rate, but we'll see. But I'll keep you posted on the live birth data.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Quick personnel update. Samantha Sorrentino began her new tenure here in, in Lee Elementary School today. So she's a new first grade teacher. And then Leah Bartini, while her last day is effective the end of the month, she has, she has left for new, new employment. We wish her the best. Principal Martinup has hired a replacement for her and she will begin on the 31st. So you'll look for a, an update on her at our February 8th meeting. COVID-19, I, I, I long for the day when I, when I won't have these slides as part of our regular presentations, but here's the update. The mask mandate is in place until at least February 28th. You know, we've seen that change. The beginning of the year was October 15th, and it got moved to January 15th, and now it's February 28th. I, I don't know, you know, what will happen in the spring when the weather warms up and such, but right now that's where we are. We did have that quick pause in activities. And I appreciate the patient's understanding and cooperation and the part of those who are affected by that. I know that the students, some student athletes and other participants were frustrated by that. I want to make sure, you know, I go on record that we do that for the safety in, of everyone who's part of our school community to make sure that we can keep our schools open. So that was lifted yesterday and teams are back in action participating. I think both boys and girls of basketball are playing tonight. So hopefully we were able to not have to do that again this year. The cases are on the rise, though. These are, I didn't want to bother the nurses. The nurses are working so hard. I didn't want to ask them again for, for numbers. But prior to our previously scheduled meeting, we were at 105 cases. I, I believe that that is more than we had in entirety of last year by quite a bit. And so we just really need, while people aren't getting as sick, we need people to make sure that they are following the washware and watch protocols and reminder to staff and students alike, if you're not feeling well, please stay home. We don't need heroes. We need people who are healthy and well, and the risk of getting somebody sick is not, is not in anyone's best interest. So let's focus on that. This morning, well, late last night, I got an email from the commissioner asking for a meeting at 8:30. We had a quick meeting with him this morning. There is going to be an option to shift away from test and stay. And so what the, if we do that, the state will be making available to all who are participating in pooled testing, at-home testing kits that will have two, two tests per kit to be shared once every other week. The expectation is, oh, Mrs. Wadsworth has one. The expectation would be, you know, we do pooled testing on Mondays. We get the results on Tuesdays. We'd be asking pooled testing participants to self-administer tests on Thursdays. And so they basically become tested twice a week and we're gonna abandon test and stay. It'll be a relief on our, our nursing staff and provide some mental, I think, mental health and wellness for those who are participating to know that they have that opportunity. So there are more details that will be coming out about this, that the call with the commissioner. If I said it was 90 seconds, that may be long this morning. He just got out in front of the governor's announcement this morning to make sure that we knew about that and indicated that we'd be getting more information about that either later today or tomorrow. There is a webinar scheduled for tomorrow, so the team of administrators will learn more. Then I will share with the public what I, what I'm able to share and what is meaningful to them in the next 24 hours or so. Reminder on protocols, you know, frustrations are still abound. It's hard sometimes to get a straight answer. So when, when this meeting is done and this presentation gets posted to the website, that link that's there is the most up-to-date DSE protocols that are available. So if families, staff, students have questions and want to see what should happen, when and why the link to quarantine and isolation protocols are found there. Today in our pool testing, we collected 302 samples. So that's a half, half of our student body, but that's a lot of staff that are participating as well. So we, we encourage people to sign up and you can do that at any time. There's a link on our website where if you want to offer your consent, you can do that. Vaccination data, again, through January 6th, we're not doing too badly. You know, if you look at those numbers for 12 to 15 and 16 to 19-year-olds fully vaccinated, 70% for the first group and 77% of the second group. And again, that, those data now, excuse me, are about, almost two weeks old. So hopefully those numbers are even higher today. Again, I don't want to turn this into a, a political campaign, but I encourage people who are able and willing to get vaccinated. Keep yourself safe and the people around you safe as well. Because of the holiday week, that's, that's, I was expecting a preview, I'm sorry. Staffing needs, this is a reminder, we continue to need substitute teachers, paraprofessionals, food service employees, bus drivers, anyone and everyone. I think that a huge shout-out needs to go to our own staff who on a regular basis step up and step in to help their colleagues who need coverage and to make sure that our students have a caring adult in front of them offering them support and instruction to the, to the greatest degree possible. And I understand that sometimes if I was a history teacher and I was putting a math class, I may not necessarily be able to offer the instruction, but I can certainly try to be a guiding factor in the classroom to make sure that students stay on task. Update on the strategic plan. Again, excellence is expected. The plan should be ready for the school committee to review prior to your, or at your February 8th meeting. The areas of focus of curriculum wellness, technology, and district organization are prominent. And I think it's really important to note that the plan's been written so that all areas are emphasizing remediation or recovery from, in a post-pandemic environment. So what we're doing is looking at how do we best support areas that were affected by the pandemic, which we all know is every single area. And then how do we keep us moving forward so that we can be, you know, leaders in education in the, in the coming years? So that's what I have for you right now. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns or any comments that anyone may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike? All right. Well, thank you. And I would like to second, Mike, thank you to all the staff at Lee Public Schools for stepping up. It, it has been a hairy couple of months with staffing all over Massachusetts. And so thank you, thank you for stepping up and stepping in where you're needed because it doesn't go unnoticed. I know that I have been, I, I, I always appreciate it when you guys stepped up and stepped in, and so thank you for doing it. It is very much appreciated. Next thing on our agenda is the principals and directors report. And first up is Tim Mertnup from Lee Elementary School. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Andrea. I want to reiterate what you both, Superintendent Richard and you said about stepping up and stepping in. In my 21 years here in this district, one thing is consistent, and that is that the people in the district take care of each other. And anybody that's worked here knows that, and, and it's been exemplified over the past, you know, school year and a half, for sure. I don't have a lot to share tonight, but I do want to share some important things that have been going on. At LES, we continue to remain vigilant with COVID mitigations by strictly following the masking policy, distancing whenever possible and encouraging hand washing. I also want to acknowledge and thank our school nurse, Janine Salvatore, who's done a great job managing and implementing test and stays as well as being a helpful resource for families, faculty, and staff throughout this very challenging time. Superintendent Richard had mentioned that Samantha Sorrentino is our new first grade teacher. I also wanted to share that. We're very excited to have her on board. Earlier this month, we changed and improved our dismissal procedure. Anybody that has spent time at the elementary school knows some of the logistical challenges we have just in terms of the long driveway and one in, one out, as well as the width of the driveway. With COVID last year, we had about 122 cars on average each day. We're averaging between 70 and 100 this year. We are no longer dismissing bus students from LMHS. We're dismissing everybody, including bus students from LES. And as part of this change, we're also using dismissal software, which has worked out really well. Today is the sixth school day that we've implemented this change, and we dismissed the entire student body safely in about 15 minutes. So we're very, very happy about this new change that we've created. And as we, you know, continue to, to increase the efficiency over the coming days and weeks, all while maintaining the safety of students. You know, everybody's on board and I'm thankful for that. Quarter two grades closed last Friday and report cards go home this coming Friday, and quarter three started today. And that's what I have for you this month.
Thanks so much, Tim. Does anybody have any questions for Tim? All right.
Andrea, can I just add really quickly? So the dismissal software that, that Tim was referring to was we use Rural Aid to, to purchase that. And, you know, the spirit of rural aid is a lot of times about collaboration. I'd like to say we spun that to say that we're helping those school choice families who are responsible for their own pick-up and drop-off in terms of efficiencies to get them in and out of the, in and out of the and the campus. So I just wanted to make sure that, that the committee was aware of, of how that was funded.
I think that that just drop off and pick off of, up at the elementary school has been a cluster for years and has been really, really difficult for a lot of families. And I know it's caused stress and heartache for a lot of families. And I know that families would come and get in line 45 minutes to an hour before they needed to pick their kids up. And that, that causes a lot of stress and anxiety and upheaval to families. And so if we can alleviate that for families, then let's do it. So thank you for, for all of your hard work at the elementary school to be able to do that. So kudos to you guys. Okay, up next, we have Greg Brigenti from Lee Muddlin High School. Welcome, Greg.
Good evening, everyone. I also have a very short and brief report this month. There was a vacation, a week and a half in there after all. So as Emma noted earlier, today began the second semester of the school year. It is shocking to me that we're already halfway done with this school year. It's been an interesting one, but it's really flowing along to, to just say that. As Tim mentioned, second quarter grades closed last week. Because of the snow day, we are giving a little extra time this quarter. So report cards for us will be issued on Monday, the 24th. And again, all parents and guardians and students will receive those via email directly from Focus. And we certainly are happy to print any paper copies for those families who need one. Just looking forward to next month, it is time for our annual look at changes to the program of studies at the middle and high school. We pretty much do that every February. There'll be a few changes that I'll bring to you next month, but not a whole heck of a lot, but a couple of really cool things that I think we'd like to put in place for next year. So that being said, I will not repeat things that other people have said, and that'll be all for tonight.
Thanks, Greg. Does anybody have any questions for Greg? All right. And I appreciate you not repeating yourself, Greg. Next up, we have Jen Norton with Special Education. Welcome, Jen.
Hi, everyone. Um, so I don't have a lot to add, but there are a few things going on in the Special Education Department. One, I have to say that I've had my new assistant with me for several months right now, and things are going really well. We're to the point where we're pretty much caught up and at a good place. We're, we're booking meetings out two to four weeks with our goal, having them all about four weeks ahead of time scheduled. So families can determine if they need to change those, but giving them enough Scheduled so families can determine um if they need to change those, but giving them enough time to do that. So. Um, we've had a lot of input from our staff, so we are doing meetings primarily through Zoom right now. Because the families have also liked that, but we are always, um, we always have other options. So if a family needs to or wants to be in person, we can make that happen. Um, but for, you know, the safety of everyone, we we are primarily still doing Zooms. And I have to say, it's been nice in one aspect. Um, I think probably we don't have a lot of good things to say about COVID. But we've had a lot of families participate in more ways than they have before with the special education process. Because they can be much more flexible with their time of day and maybe not have to drive here from wherever they work. So. That's one good thing. And and we we have very few IEPs or things that are out there that are not signed, which is just tremendous. And as Ms. Larmen knows, is the bane of our existence at times, getting things signed. Um, so this has been kind of one nice addition. Um, Kristen is doing a really great job, and I think um she fits right in, and I think this is been a really good addition to our team. Um, progress notes will be going out this week as well. They will be mailed at the end of the week, so parents will be getting them. Um, progress, the quarterly progress notes for um individualized education plans right around the same times um that they get the report cards. Um, we can't do those completely digitally yet, although hopefully in the next year or two, we will be able to. Um, so right now we are still mailing those. It's just a little bit easier. Um, but if we change systems at some point, that might be a little bit more functional as we look down the road. Um, we do still have a couple of open positions for paraprofessionals. Um, we tentatively have one person coming on. Mr. Richard's going to be meeting with that person this week. So hopefully we will have that filled. And then I have two part time positions still open. And as other people have said, and I will repeat, um, we can always use subs. So if you are at all interested or available, even if it's only one or two days a week or a month, please come and fill out the paperwork. We would appreciate that. Um, we were going to be starting preschool full time next week. We did push that off a couple of weeks. Because we had some staff illness um and a few higher numbers with students. So we decided just to wait a couple of weeks and make sure we were all ready and on the same page. So our three year olds will be starting four days a week. Um, on February seventh, so that's very exciting. Most of our families are going to be taking advantage of that. Not all of them. We've still let it be an option that if they only want to do the two days a week for the rest of this year. Especially in the state of things right now, we would absolutely support them in that. Um, but we are hoping to have all ten of our three year old preschoolers here for four mornings a week. So that's exciting. And we are looking to start, believe it or not, three and four year old screenings as well as kindergarten screenings. And those ads will be going in the paper in the next three or four weeks. So I will um let you know once that is done. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Jen. Does anybody have any questions for Jen? Okay, um, I'm not seeing Jordan on here anywhere.
No, uh, Jordan uh wasn't able to make it tonight. Uh, however, he did want uh. Want me to relay to the committee and the community that uh things are in good shape uh in the facilities realm. Um, that they've been able to keep up with uh the weather issues that we've had, ma- maintaining the building. And and doing regular building checks with the extreme temperature situations that have happened over the last uh couple of weeks. And so um all is well uh with our facilities there and they're in good condition. Mr. Brigenti wanted to blame uh, I think Mr. Meyer for a broken copier, but um I'll let those two figure that out.
They can duke it out between the two of them. Okay, perfect. All right. Uh, next thing on our agenda is committee reports. Uh, our first thing up is finance committee. Uh, Randy is not here, so I guess I'll step in and be the pseudo finance committee person. Um, thank you, Mike, because I don't have anything to be able to do it with. Um, so we've got some warrants. Maybe. Ah. All right, so we've got uh some accounts payable warrants. The uh, I'm, Mike, can I let you talk about the accounts payable warrants? Because you know what's in there and I don't. You're muted.
Sorry, apologize. Uh, you've got um, you've got two uh, two vouchers there totaling a hundred eighty eight thousand nine hundred eleven dollars eighty five cents. Um, going from bottom to top, uh, Pittsfield over at Door, that's a capital expense. Ever Source is our energy. Uh, the town of Lee Fringe, that's for CFCD, that's uh, that's grant funding. Uh, Valiant and Crest, uh, Hillcrest are special education uh expenses. And then spraying operating is also another energy. Um, bill uh that we pay. So those are your highest um amounts there. And again, they total one hundred and eighty eight thousand nine hundred eleven dollars. Eighty five cents.
Okay, and so I'm going to step down. So as my finance, as the finance committee representative, I'm going to say that the finance committee did approve these. Um, as the chair of the school committee, I'm now going to say I will accept a motion to accept the uh accounts payable. Total.
I'll make a motion to accept the counts payable warrant, the amount of one hundred eighty eight thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and eighty five cents.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, Brett, I don't know where you are. There you are, Brenda. Brenda, can you do a roll call for me?
Mr. Ovin?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Kishark?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes, sorry, I couldn't find the mute button. Yes.
Okay, next up is payroll. Um, and. Mike, I'm going to let you talk about this one.
Yeah, so um payroll is um is a little bit less uh this time. Um, because of the timing of the meeting, uh, but the um, we didn't want to push through. We weren't able to, I shouldn't say we we didn't want to, we weren't able to get another finance committee uh together to approve uh the additional. Um, uh, funds that were that will be um paid out this week. Uh, but what you have in front of you are um December's expenses in the amount of two hundred and seventy nine thousand six hundred forty three dollars and ninety six. Cents. And again, those are in line with expectations.
Okay, um, and so as my, as the finance committee person, these were accepted by the finance committee. Uh, now as the chair, I will accept a motion uh for the payroll total.
I move to accept the payroll total of two hundred and seventy nine thousand six hundred and forty three dollars and ninety six cents.
A second.
Any discussion?
Do we need to do anything preliminarily for the expenses that were not included in this, or is that going to be next month's vote?
You've got, so you've got a a payroll, oh my, actually I'm not muted, uh payroll warrant. Um, that will get processed uh tomorrow for this week's payroll uh that's not included um here. So that'll go out for approval to the chair, uh, but it won't go out until tomorrow. Um, because of the timing, we weren't able to get that approved.
Andrea, I see you raising your hand.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, uh, did we change the payroll process? And are we no longer doing it in-house through Budget Sense, Tyler Tech, and we're now using a third party vendor?
Well, I sent you an email, uh, the committee members an email uh in December sometime. Uh, that 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 IV uh does not, is not the um, I don't know, vendor. Uh, for payroll, it's been switched over to Harper's payroll. Uh, and so that uh transition took place in the last. Uh, the first half of twenty twenty two. Um, and as far as we can tell, there was one. Uh, there was one issue, uh, one staff member who um. Or had originally signed up for direct deposit, then changed back to paper check. But that direct deposit was still uh hiding in the background, if you would, of of IV. So a direct deposit was made for that person instead of a paper check cut. We ended up the next day. Um, getting that uh staff member their check, uh, their paper check. Uh, and of course, that was the Friday when there was a weather event. So uh, so it was a little delayed in getting to them, but they did get it. So everybody's pay was um was was good, accounted for and proper. Um, I will tell you that the um Louise Kirchner has been uh working her her rear end off. Uh, sort of adjusting and making uh making sort of all the loose ends tied up. Uh, for payroll and 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 a credit to her for making that happen. Uh, but we did make that adjustment. Um, and to your point, that was a um, I guess that was uh, that the town went in that direction, Mrs. Wadsworth. And we um, we expressed concern, I will say openly, that that uh. Louise, Kathy Ragusa and I sort of advocated to uh try to keep. Um, the status quo, uh, was functioning, was working for us. Um, I I felt like at some point. Uh, that that town said, well, this is the direction that we're going and um.
Yep. How are they, um, how are they accounting for the fi- the salaries on the financial side? The whole part of the ERP system was to make sure that the financials were tied. And so now that we've gone away and have now a third party, do you have to do extra work, Mike, to get your salaries in your reports?
Uh, that's, that's the things that are being done right now. So uh, that's sort of that background work. So things are being done in. Um, in IV that did get carried over then into Harper's. So there is. At least right now, we've been led to believe it's not a forever problem, but uh that it's, there's a little bit of growing pace as we learn. Um, as we learn Harper's and and how it works. But there is some modicum of redundancies right now. Um, that we're struggling with, but we're, you know, at the end of the day, we're getting done what needs to be done.
And so a couple more questions. And we bought that system and we pay a quite a hefty price. So now we're not going to be using a whole module and assuming we're paying for Harper's. So is the town absorbing all of those costs and we, it's not affecting our budget at all?
That's correct. The town's picking up the the Harper's expenses.
Awesome. Okay. Well, good luck with that. I don't know how you're going to do your financials and projections when you're in two different systems, but it's been done before.
We're, we're figuring it out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so what I was going to say is I don't think it's going to be an issue because if we had held the meeting at the right time last week. We wouldn't have had the stuff for the warrant for this week anyways. Am I correct? See you going like this, Andrea. So I think you're saying yes to me. Yes, okay.
Yes, I was going to say that, but you guys had it. I. It's a timing issue.
Yes, right. Okay. So any other discussion? Okay, Brenda, can you roll call us? No, wait a minute. We didn't do, do we didn't have it? Did we have it? We did. We now we need to do a roll call. I'm sorry. Yes, I got lost.
I had Ms. Strickler making the motion and Mr. Ovin seconding the motion.
Yes, and then we did a discussion and now we need to do a roll.
Okay, Mr. Ovin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kishark?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Nichols?
I'm staying.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes. Okay. Um, so the next thing on the agenda is the transfer funds for the scoreboard replacement. For the scoreboard down on the girls soccer slash uh lacrosse field. Um, so this is how the, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to read through all this. So because you can all see what what happened. And we had talked about this at the last meeting, but this is how the transfer funds was done. Um, to uh purchase the scoreboard board. So the uh finance committee approved uh the fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars to. Uh, the moving around so that we could purchase the scoreboard in a nutshell. Um, so that's my finance report as the chair. I will entertain a motion to approve the. Moving.
I'll make a motion uh to approve the transfer of funds uh to purchase the scoreboard. In the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, uh, Brenda, can you do a roll?
I just wanted to add.
Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you, Mike, for this. This, this makes sense. Uh, um, it was a little hard to follow when I was reading it, but I see that. You actually could list the two account once if you wanted, but that, this looks great. Thank you.
I appreciate hearing that. I was trying to give you all the details when they were there. That's good.
Perfect. Okay, so uh, any other discussion? Okay, Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Ovin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kishark?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
Yes.
And the last thing on the agenda was just the substitute pay rates. And um, we just had a discussion about this. We didn't really go any further than this because we think it might need to go to the negotiations committee. Before it comes, no, no, Andrew's saying no.
No, no, actually, the school committee set substitute rates. And I don't know what discussion you had, but if we, you have a suggestion, was was something proposed?
Oh, yeah. Like, we had it, we had a discussion, and then after we went through it all, we were like, ooh, is this something that needs to go to negotiations? Or we weren't really sure?
Nope.
So maybe, so we probably need to bring it back and have it approved and then bring it back to you guys, maybe?
Sure, or you could have the discussion here. We just, it's on your agenda, so you could discuss it, uh, but we don't have any details, so. A- as you go back, though, I would request that we know the impact of whatever um increases we make. So that's all.
Impact on the budget or on current budget or next year's budget? Because we did talk about both.
Good, both. So you just want to project out the difference and um.
You, Mike, we were a rock star and we didn't even know it.
Yeah, you guys are good. Uh, I, this is something, just to like commentary. This is something that's happening obviously across um all of the districts in Berkshire County, probably the state. It's hard to get subs. You should probably pay a little bit more so you can get people to come in. They're making about eight bucks an hour and they're, you know, working hard. So um, it's, it's something that's coming up.
So can we, so can I have Mike put up what we had discussed and can it be approved here without it going back to the subcommittee?
Sure. Was it part of your finance committee packet anyways? Sure, it's a public record right now.
Throw it up, Mike.
Uh, that means I gotta find it. Um, so.
Um, Randy's got his, not Randy, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Kirk, you're not Randy, you're Kirk, and I apologize. You have your hand up. You can stay, you're not going to comment.
Um, so I I um, if we're justice, I'm actually going to leave the meeting.
No, no, you're not going to leave. You're just not going to comment.
Okay, easy. I'll just.
And, and I believe he can in, um, if he would like, he can engage in conversation and he can accuse. Um, recuse himself from voting. So he's allowed as a member to have an opinion in in the discussion.
Thank you for that. I'm probably just going to keep uh, keep quiet.
Well, and and I would add too, if if the conflict is that you're, it's an existing employee, unless they're a sub, you don't have a conflict.
They are.
Oh, okay.
He's been a very good, when we had the conversation during finance, he ducked out and then came back in. He's been, yeah. Did you find it, Mike, or no?
Well, what I'm just wondering about is um, for the sake of um efficiencies, we only have, we're only uh two weeks out. I think from our, from our next meeting.
Okay, so maybe we bring it to the next meeting, is that okay?
I, I, that would be my, my preference, and then I can make sure that I get everybody all the information that they have.
That would be great. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Andrea, and once again, helping me out. Thank you for clarifying that, Andrea, and once again, helping me out.
Absolutely.
Okay, so now I'm going to step into my, I actually am the chair of the policy committee, so I can actually take that over. So with the, so for the policy committee, the animals in schools, all we did was dig and make sure we actually had a policy if we needed to go through it. We do. We didn't do anything other than that. We just made sure we had a policy and we just talked about the fact that if we do actually just make a decision to bring animals into the school, we're going to need legal to work with us to make any changes that we may need to make to any kind of policy before we make those decisions. That's what we did with that one. So I'm just filling you in as to where we were with that one. Second one, school event conduct policy. With regards to this one, the policy subcommittee decided not to take this on as a policy because it was a one-off incident. And we didn't feel that there was a necessity to build a policy for events for a one-off incident. And the fact that we do have conduct, that the parents of our students are expected to have, to follow a conduct thing that they have to sign. I forget what the wording is. I'm not going to make, pull Greg up on the spot, but we talked about it. And that we do have police presence at our, at our games and that the administration would handle the incidents in with the police if there was ever a situation again. In my 20 years in the district, this is the first incident I ever had that this happened. And I, we investigated, Mike talked to Greg and he had said in his eight years, this is the first time it had happened for him. So for a one-off incidence, it didn't seem like it was a necessary to create a policy. So that was the decision of the policy committee on that one. And then for the unwelcome Zoom guest policy, we reworded it to be an unwelcome virtual meeting guest policy. We came up with a draft and we sent it off to legal to have them have a look at it before we relook at it again and bring it back to you guys for it to be, to have any kind of reading done on it. And so that's what the policy committee got done in their meeting last Monday, I think it was, that we met. So I just wanted to keep you up to breast as to where we were in that. Go ahead, Betsy.
So what is the next step regarding specifically the animals in school? I know you said
So before we can do anything, we have to talk about the donation and the school committee actually has to accept the donation before we can do anything with it. So we haven't even discussed the donation or accepted the donation. So we can't do anything until we've done that, which is under new business. So
Gotcha.
Yeah. So that's where we are with that. So under old business, the LSC rubric, which is our school committee rubric. Do you have another question? Never mind. Okay, you put it down. Mike, am I able to share my screen?
I'll give you permissions. Should be able to now.
Okay. So I just wanted to be able to show you guys what I did was I took the Can you see, can you see what I, are you getting the presenter view or the regular view?
Presenter.
Okay, wait. I don't care. You're getting what you're getting because I can't get it now. Okay. So the, the, the view on the left is the, what we did in August. The view on the right is what we just did in December. These are the scores that came through. So if you look at the one on the left in August and in December, the majority of the responses said that the school committee and the superintendent have agreed and voted on goals. And they're posted on the website once a year and they're used by the school committee to evaluate the superintendent. So that's what we had for the first section of the rubric.
Andrea, I'm sorry, what is the spring, what is this, what is the fall and what is now? Left or right?
The left is what we did in August.
Thank you.
The right is what we did in December.
Okay, thank you.
Right, you're welcome. Okay. Same thing on this one, operating protocols. So in August, the most popular answer was because of some tension on the board, the superintendent and some members of the school committee have talked about making some rules for working together, but they may not be written down and have not come to a vote. And then in December, we had a tie. And it was between individual members and the superintendent communicate separately based on personal relationships and prior traditions. Some members may feel left out or speak negatively in public about the members and the board's decisions. And or because of some tensions on the board, the superintendent and some school committee members have talked about making some rules for working together, but they may not be written down and have not come to a vote. So we have those two. So there was a split on the second one. And I'll send this out.
I'm just confused. Did we get better or worse?
I think we got a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
A little bit better. So for meetings, we stayed the same, exactly the same. The superintendent and school committee have an agreement on how the agenda will be set and student outcomes are often discussed. The superintendent will schedule a special meeting if he, she needs to discuss a major initiative in advance of a major decision. So I think this is, I think this is a strength of ours. We're pretty good about scheduling meetings when we need to schedule them. I think because of COVID, we've been, we've had more meetings than we probably need to. Not that we need to, but more meetings than we typically usually do because of the stuff that's going on with COVID. Monitoring. So in August, the school committee and the superintendent periodically review school committee, I'm sorry, student outcome data when working on the budget or at evaluation time. There is general agreement on what data is important to track. And then in December, it was the same, the same majority, but it got split differently, which I thought was interesting. So instead of it being the majority being, so in August, it was seventy-one percent to twenty-eight percent. And this time it was fifty percent and then the other three were split by thirds. So I think that that's a more positive outlook because it looks like we are actually doing a better job of discussing data, if that makes sense, and monitoring. And then the last one is community engagement. Oops. So in August, the school committee uses feedback to inform budget policy and planning. Regularly, regularly avenues for communicating are scheduled, promoted and conducted in a way to encourage public input and follow-up, especially around big decisions. And then in December, the school committee has authorized strategies for feedback, including public forums, public comment periods and district climate surveys. Policies on public input are clear and accessible. And I think I would attribute that to the fact that you are working on the strategic plan as well right now. So I think in general, we've improved a little bit. And I think that we also have more member, our, our members of the board have had a little bit more experience with being on the board now would be my takeaway from this. But I do think, and I did get feedback from a couple people, that these aren't easy things to pick because they aren't always the answer that you want. So I'm happy if you guys are too, to add a comment section to each one of the questions for next time. So you can like pick the answer you think and then put a comment and I'll collect the comments as well, if you would like to do that. I'm, I'm getting a thumbs up from people. Okay. Do I need to, do we need to vote for that or can I just add? Okay, good. I will just add it in before we do it the next time. So thank you, everybody, for adding that in. I think, I think it's a good thing for us to keep just testing the water for us. I think, I personally think we've done some great things over the last couple of months. I have had feedback from each and every one of you that we're starting to really click as a team. And I, and I think that this also shows that. So thank you for your time and energy. I need to get this off of my screen so I can find my agenda. There it is. Okay. So the next thing that we need to talk about is the Zoom meeting format change. I think from all the information that Mike gathered and from the feedback that we got from different districts and the feedback that we got from the committee members, that it sounds like we'd like to keep the format the way it is and have the policy in place for the unwanted virtual meeting guests. And if that's the case, I assume we need to have a motion to keep it the same? Or do we just have, need to have nothing and it just stays the same? Andrea says, no, it just stays the same. Okay, it just stays the same? Yes?
Yes, unless someone made a motion to change it and you're addressing their motion by looking it up. But no, I didn't think so. Okay. Yeah, you're not changing anything. You're just reinforcing what you have.
Okay. And then the next thing on our agenda is public comment. And I do know that Mike did some, some homework for us to get some background information from other districts as to when they hold their public comment information section in their agenda. I also found in our policies and procedures manual that we have a policy as to when we hold our public comment. And our policy says that our public comment is to be held at the beginning of our meeting, which is when we hold it. So we have a policy as to when it's being held, as to when it's supposed to be held as well. So that's also why we hold it when we hold it. Didn't know we had a policy. I've found a lot of policies when I was looking for other things a couple of weeks ago, when I was trying to figure out whether we had to hold our meeting last week when we had no school. So we actually have a policy as to when we're supposed to hold public comment. And it says it's supposed to be held where we have it being held at the beginning of the meeting. But Mike, can you share with the public? Because I know you shared it with all of us, what you found, but can you share with the public what you found? You don't need to share the document, but you share it.
Sure. So I did call my colleague in Berkshire County and it was a rather even split. I will admit that not everybody replied, but that's not, that's not abnormal, unfortunately. But it, about, call it forty-five percent have it at the beginning, the first third of the meeting, forty-five percent, the last third of the meeting. And then there was this small, one outlier that held it somewhere else, if I recall correctly. But it was basically beginning of the meeting or end of the meeting and they were evenly split. So, you know, I, again, I think it's, it's I don't know if it's an issue of if it's not broke, don't fix it. Type of scenario right now, I think that we can, we can make it work. And I would suggest that probably if we need to revisit it at a later time, you could do that. But we're not outliers in how we proceed. The way we set our agendas, we're in line with at least fifty percent of the people. The other fifty percent are doing, doing it slightly differently, but
And I think it's important for you to also talk about, but I'm going to do it now because you didn't, is that in each one of their responses, they talked about the fact that public comment was limited to what was on the agenda.
Right.
That there was no response back from the committee. So the public was allowed to comment on any item that was going to be talked about on the agenda that night. But the committee didn't respond back. That it wasn't an open debate. It was just a time for somebody, for the public to give, to sort of give their two cents or to give their opinion on the, something that was on the agenda. And a lot of them talked about the time limits that people were held to during that public comment time. Yes, Andrea.
So I agree with all of that, although, and, not although, and if someone came during public comment and wanted to sing the Star Spangled Banner and it wasn't on the agenda, they could because that is their public time to do that. While the, the best practice is to stick to the agenda and the chair could shut it down. And then, you know, you could have a whole series of things. But sometimes people do come to meetings just to speak on topics that aren't relevant. And that's a whole different thing. We have fortunately, in the 10 years I've been doing this, have not had that happen. So that's good. Yes.
Right. But there, we do have a policy that's in our policy manual, which is online. If anybody would like to peruse it, I, I did put it in my, in my notability, if anybody needs the lettering, if you wanted to, you know, if you, if you have nothing better to do with your free time and you're stuck at home and don't know what to do with yourself, it's policy BEDH. For those of you that have nothing better to do and would like to read the policy, go ahead, Betsy.
I just keep wondering if there's any way that we are on occasion able to ask questions or ask somebody to further explain whatever it is they're bringing to us. Because sometimes I think it's, you know, often I say, okay, it's great. It's their time to share with us. And then we just absorb. But there are times when I wish there was a way to ask follow-up questions. And I don't know if that's something we can consider.
You mean during public comment? I think that's difficult because I think then you're, you're, you're opening up a debate.
Right.
And, yeah.
Right. And I think it's just one of those, I wish.
Yeah.
So a way to get around that, if we wanted to do that, is the, the actual public input says issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or subcommittee. And you can invite that person to come to the subcommittee, put them on the agenda and then they can speak and you can ask them questions. And so it's a little bit more tedious. The actual guidelines is that people aren't to participate in the meeting. They're there to view the meeting. And so public comment is a choice that the committee makes. It's not always considered an option or can be an option on an agenda, although it's counter to including the public. So that's why we do it. God, I don't know if I'm
All right. So does that make sense to everybody? Okay. All right. Next thing on the agenda is the donation. So I'm going to let Mike speak to that.
Thank you. So I guess it was in December sometime. It came to my attention that the Lenox Public Schools was receiving a donation from Lee Kohlenberger and, and his businesses, businesses to which he's, he's associated to, for comfort dogs for the schools. And I was connected with, with Lee and we had some early conversations. And Lee indicated that he would be interested in, in sort of moving that type of donations on a more widespread basis and would be sort of willing to engage with the Lee Public Schools for such a donation. Lee put together a couple of documents that I shared with the committee about what those donations may would include, what his responsibilities would be and what our responsibilities would be should we ever choose to move forward with that. I will tell you that I did bring this to, I did some research. Checked in with legal. I checked in with MIA, that's M-I-A, and they are the sort of the insurance carriers for the, for the town about liabilities and such. And, you know, there are some, some things that we would need to be considerate of and mindful of. If, if, if the committee were to move forward with this. You know, they include obviously financial implications, liability implications, responsibilities. You know, you heard from, from Carrie earlier in the meeting. But I don't know, Ms. Larmen, where you want me to, where you want me to steer this conversation or whether you want this to be a discussion amongst the committee members. I do see that Mr. Kohlenberger is in the audience tonight, but I don't know. Again, I prefer to maybe answer questions from you. I'm not sure to how, how deep you want me to go into any one of those areas that I sort of touched on as things that were investigated.
I mean, I think the committee probably has a lot of questions, so I, I think this is probably a good time for people to ask questions. So Andrea, go ahead.
Well, I can make it official for you. I'd like to make a motion that we open discussion regarding the donation from Berkshire Comfort Dogs.
I second.
Okay, discussion.
So I, I, I am going to listen to all of this because, um, I find it intriguing and thank you, Lee. I don't know if you know this, but my brother Frank has Charlie Brown. I believe he's one of your studs. And so, so I know Charlie Brown well and I, and my brother loves him and he's not a dog owner and he's not a dog person. So I'm impressed with that. I've also met, um, Chief Wynn's dog and so he was at the local, um, our, our vaccination clinic. So it was interesting to see him as a puppy. And I know he shared, they call it shared custody with Officer Darren and then the chief. So I think that's great. And full disclosure, I'm someone who owns five dogs and they live inside my house, uh, with us, uh, four Shih Tzu's and a golden retriever. It's like one big dog that blew up and then the big dog with it. Um, I have ten goats, two horses and three cats. So I'm a avid animal lover. And as a school committee member, I am very weary of taking on the responsibility of being animal owners. We are here to educate students. I would love to see this donation given to the police department and mirrored what's happening in Pittsfield. I've reached out to some counterparts of my own, um, in the region and asked if they were accepting the dogs. I know Lennox has. I, I try not to do what Lennox does, not that that's the barometer of why we do things. I don't know of other schools that are doing this. I would love to hear who those are and I'd love to hear of the path that they've created. It's, um, I think this is a good resource for kids and there is a comfort to it. Although when I saw Winston this weekend, he was lovely, but there's a lot of training and he's a puppy. And so in two years, he'll be older and better and more trained and that's awesome. And hopefully, and I'm not saying every emotional issue will be gone, but I'm hoping that our kids are stronger and, and are in a better place than we are today. So, um, that's just my two cents, but I'm going, I would love to hear all the conversation of the board.
Betsy, you had your hand up next.
Thank you, Andrea, for all of that. That was, I think, really insightful and, and also thinking through, as you said, two years from now. What, what does that look like? I don't know if we can cover everything in this timeframe tonight, but I would love to know, Mike, what you've learned through the legal, the financial implications. I personally think this would be a phenomenal idea for our students and the fact that we have at least one caretaker who has already raised her hand. So thank you, Carrie. But I, I do think it's really important that we go through the full vetting process and don't get caught up in the, oh, my God, it's a cute puppy. Which I for one would be all in favor of. So again, I, I do think it's a good idea, but I think we should perhaps see a write-up on the financials and the implications.
Kirk.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Lee, thank you so much for the, the offer, the donation. Uh, it really, um, appreciate that. You know, I'm, I'm aware, uh, of, uh, dogs being owned by municipalities, um, kind of the context of like police canines. So, and, you know, not something I'm very familiar with, but I, I, I know a lot of guys that have, have had dogs. Um, and I, you know, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the finances associated with this. I know that the donation, it was a lot of stuff that Lee and his company are covering. And again, incredibly grateful for that. Um, but you know, this is a piece of property that our, um, department's going to own, that our, our school, excuse me, is going to own, our town's going to own. Um, and you know, there's finances that go along with, you know, the care and maintenance of this, of this piece of property. On a, on a very regular basis. So I am concerned about, you know, having an animal, having a piece of property for ten, twelve years or the lifespan, um, where we're going to be hooked financially to this piece of property, this animal. Um, and we're going to have to pay someone to maintain this animal and take care of it. Um, and then, you know, we've all had animal or, you know, those who've had animals. You know, there's always the unexpected, the veterinary bills that depending on what we're looking at can get very pricey. Um, and so I, I guess at the end I'm, I'm not opposed. But I, I'm, I'm concerned about the finances, um, associated with bringing this program on. You know, I have seen comfort animals being used in amazing ways that have, uh, you know, done a lot of really great things. Um, but I also want to make sure that we're not just, you know, jumping on a trend for the sake of jumping on a trend. If there's a need for it in our school, um, just like if there's a need for a new plow truck, I support it. But we have to make sure that we're okay with the finances associated with it.
Thanks, Kirk. Uh, Aaron.
Thank you and thank you, Lee, for bringing up this, uh, donation to the board and all that there. And again, my concern is also finances too. We're taking on something not just for one to two years, but we're looking at thirteen, fourteen years. I love animals. I was a ferret owner. I have two cats right now. Talk about a dog, which is not a good look for my cat right now. But again, my concern is the financials also. What is the plan? How's this dog going to be used in the classroom? Is it going to be split up between the two schools? I mean, and also what's legal going to say? I mean, the big thing is how legal is going to present this and what is the plan and what is the financials for this? Who's going to pay for the food? Who's going to pay for the medical bills? Who's going to pay for anything that something does go wrong? It, that's my concern too. I love animals. I know sometimes pets in the buildings can be a morale booster for both the kids and staff, but there's also that cost too that goes along with it. And I'm, I'm hesitant a little bit, but again, until I see all the facts and information for me to make a very informed decision. That's, I think, where we need to sort of go with this.
Thanks, Aaron. Uh, Nicole.
Okay. So I'm a little torn on this, but I will say I'm, I'm the opposite of Andrea Wadsworth and Erin. I am not an animal lover. In fact, I'm the opposite. So I have zero animals and I'll never have any animals. However, with that said, I do see, you know, as an educator, the, the benefit to having animals a hundred percent. Besides the social emotional that we're talking about, there could be a behavioral component. I mean, academic, there are studies in regards to reading, even to a pet person. I mean, anxiety, there's a, there's a lot that animals can do. So even though I personally am anti-animal, I do see how they could, that was a little harsh, benefit the students in the schools. And my concern isn't so much, again, a little bit of a different side here. The financial part doesn't bother me as much as, um, the insurance and the liability piece. I mean, there's just a lot to think about there. So I don't know if whatever our, if we vote and we happen to accept this donation. Is that it? Can we go back on it depending on what legal says, I guess? Because I mean, I'm just thinking of all as great and wonderful as the sounds and I, I want to say yes. I'm just thinking, I mean, there's like kids with allergies. There's, you know, they are animals. We're talking about live animals, you know, I, I have one, my daughter would play with the dog all day long. That's all she wants to do. And I have a son that would see it walk through the hallways and scream and cry and run away. So just, there's so many things that might go wrong with an animal that I guess I would have to hear too from legal, the implications of what this would look like in the classroom. I'm really on the fence. I'm fifty-fifty.
Thanks, Nicole. So it sounds like for me, for me, as I'm taking all this in, that what we need and you guys can all tell me if I'm hearing this correctly, that what we're, what we need is we need to have a financial, we need something that has sort of the financial implications that is presented to the board of what it's going to cost. And we need something from legal that's going to give us what the legal implications are before we can sort of move forward so that the board can really make an informed decision about the donation. Yes, Andrea.
So I'm just going to add, I think these are hyper allogenic, right, Lee? Yes, because Shih Tzus are like that too. They have to be groomed and not, they don't shed. And I would love it selfishly if the police department was offered this donation and like, you know, happily took it. And then we could just have the benefits of how, because they come in and they're, they're already such, the police officers, not the dog. But the police officers are such an ingrained part of our school community. It just would be so nice to have the best of both worlds, but I'm just throwing that out, um, as, as a suggestion on this one. Thank you.
Kirk.
Yeah, just, uh, just, um, in addition to like the financial and legal, um, I would also like to see a plan, like a plan of how we're going to use this animal as part of the comfort dog program or, or how to label it or provide it. I don't want to put the cart before the horse. You know, I don't want to, to accept the donation of property and us then turn around and say, okay, now we have to develop this program and how we're going to do it. So I think before I'd be comfortable even voting on this, I think we've already discussed the financial impact. Legal, you know, what they, what they feel. And then I'd like to look at the plan first also and make sure that we're doing something that's going to really benefit the school. I'm not saying that it's not going to. Like I said, comfort animals are, they have a lot of benefits. So I, I, I want to do those things, but I definitely want to see the program first too and not just blindly accept. You know, a, a piece of property we're going to be responsible for.
Lee, have you worked with Lennox to develop any kind of a program for what they're using in the building, in their buildings?
Yes, I have. They're using their, um, I keep saying their guidance counselor. So the plan is that you have a main handler and a backup handler. Your main handler is the, the, whether it's a classroom teacher or an admin person who takes the dog home every night, does the bulk of the training, um, vet visits, things like that. And then your backup handler could be, um, a school therapist, a nurse, something along the lines of that, that gets more coverage of children over the course of the day. So it's not just one class of thirteen students that has this dog for eight hours. It's somewhere that can be reached that goes to lunch, goes to gym, gets bounced around and that's the bulk of the training is making it so the dog's used to being bounced around. And that's really how we've shaped it for schools.
And you do the training with them, correct?
We do the training and just to add, there's, there's zero costs associated to the dog. No vet bills, no food bills, no nothing. There's no expenses for the dog.
For the life of the dog?
For the life of the dog.
So if the dog develops cancer and we want to take it to Tufts and give it nineteen sessions of radiation, that has happened. I have a dog that that happened too. You'll foot that bill for us?
If the primary vet's recommendation is that's what should be done for the dog, then that will be covered.
Wow.
I can tell you that nineteen rounds of radiation will not be the primary vet's recommendation.
If you love your animal. Or you amputate the leg and it's a tripod.
I can tell you as the mother of a soon-to-be vet, they will not tell you that's.
Exactly.
Oh, we're going to have a tough time then, people.
So, thank you. Sounds like that Lee, Lee, Lee Berkshire Lee, not Lee Schools. This is getting very confusing. Lee Berkshire, I'm going to call you Berkshire Lee. Okay. So Lee, Lee Cullenberger, right? Lee Cullenberger, is that right?
Correct.
All right. So Lee Cullenberger can work with Mike Richard to create sort of a financials for us. And then Mike Richard can work with legal to create, to get us some legal information. Um, and then we are meeting in like two weeks. Is that right? Isn't our next school committee meeting in like two and a half? It's not that long. Yeah, it's February. It's not that long. Um, is that too long for us to wait to accept our donation, Lee?
No, not at all. You're, you're looking at a donation that would be puppies that are being bred now. My goal for
Right.
My goal for all the schools is that we have this sorted out over the next two or three months for who the handler and backup handler are going to be. And my goal was for teachers to be taking puppies home, you know, mid-June so that they could spend the summer together. So we don't have, personally, I find an eight-week-old puppy in the school in any scenario, a little bit of a distraction. Um, it's more work than I think any employee really should be taking on in the course of a workday. So my goal was to send these puppies home. We go in front of Pittsfield next week and I've offered them thirteen, one for every Pittsfield Public School. So my, our plan is to make it so that everyone, all these teachers go through the training together through the summer. And they walk in on September first with five-month-old puppies that can be created and not make a noise. Can go outside once during the course of the school day and it's not something that has to go out every hour and a half. There's, there's more to this that's been put together than just the two letters that I sent to Mike in December.
Okay. So it sounds like what we need is, as a committee, is we need more on the financials. I know there's not a lot of financials, Lee, from what you've just said, but we need more on what the financials might be. We need more from legal. And we sort of probably need more on what the actual commitment's going to look like for the handlers. Not just for the beginning, but like, like in the grand scheme of things, if that makes sense, before we make any kind of commitment, um, as a district. Does that make sense to everybody around the table? Yes?
Can I just ask one more question?
No, no, I'm only kidding.
I was just, I was just wondering, so, um, are there any other, so Lennox has it and you're, you're going to Pittsfield and to us? Have you given any dogs to any other districts or are you going to plan on asking any other districts?
We've publicly offered to every district in the county. Um, originally when I started this, my offer, I was a Pittsfield firefighter for ten years. And my only thought was first responders had a need for this for critical incident stress debriefing. When Mark and Lennox reached out to me, there's actually a bigger need in schools, you know, mental health with children didn't start because of COVID. It's a higher number because of COVID, but there was still a high number prior to COVID. And these dogs make a huge difference. Just today, and I told Mike I wanted to share this, I had a Lennox parent. The dog was in school for one hour this morning, the new Lennox puppy at Morris. And a Lennox parent texted my wife and I and said TJ had a little bit of a rough day returning to school after COVID. And getting to hold and pet Teddy, the new comfort dog, was the highlight of his day. Thanks for helping calm a nervous little heart today. I'm sure Teddy did that for all of the students. You're making a real difference. Dogs are doing, are ready to serve a purpose as young puppies. Our goal is to have one-year-olds that are perfectly trained doing the same thing for a long time. And this is just one story from one day and that's worth the whole donation to us.
Right. I just, I, I want to let you know. And though I said I'm not a dog lover, that, that's very powerful to me and I completely agree with you that these mental health issues were, were well before COVID. And as a teacher in the schools, in Pittsfield Public Schools, I've seen that and I get it. And I'm, I totally agree with what you're saying and I'm on board and I appreciate the offer, no matter how it turns out, as well as thank you to Carrie for offering to take care of it. I, I hope that somehow, moving forward, we can figure out how to make an impact in our schools. Because I do think it would be great if we could.
And we interviewed, and I'm sure Carrie's not going to be the only one, at Morris, we interviewed nine handlers alone for the one puppy at Morris. So there's, you're going to find more people interested than just Carrie, which it's great that Carrie's already come forward.
Well, that's impressive. And maybe if, if this moves forward for us, we could talk to Lennox or whoever goes through this and collaborate a little bit together on what their programs look like in the schools using these animals. So we could work together and mirror what they're doing, you know, we're better together. So.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Yeah, I really appreciate you coming tonight and, and answering our questions and sharing the information.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, it's much, it's much easier for us to ask the questions of you than to ask Mike and then have Mike have to come to you and then him come back and say, now, now I got to go back to Lee. It's so much easier for us to be able to ask you directly. So I appreciate you taking the time. Mike, are you raising your hand because you have a question or are you just waving to me? You're muted.
Yeah, yes, yes, to both. Uh, I just want to, I want to make sure, I don't want to get too far off track or make sure I know what my, um, the expectations for me are. To put a plan together, um, outlining, um, there are, I think, it's important to note that while there may not be uh, financial implications that are tied to the, uh, to the puppy or puppies themselves. because of puppy or puppies themselves, there may be financial implications that are associated with handlers. So I want to make sure the committee knows that. So I will put that piece together. What you won't see is X number of dollars for food or for vet bills. I will get, make sure that Lee and I work to get that commitment in writing so that we can spell that out very clearly. We need a, some legal advice and I will ask Attorney DuPry to put something in writing for me about that. I will also make sure I get something in writing from MIA. And then I will work with both Greg and Tim to see how we could put together a proposed plan for implementation and how the dogs would be used in the school on a daily, weekly or regular basis. And I'll have that for the committee ahead of the POG meeting.
I think that sounds fantastic. Does everybody else agree? Do we need to have anything else? We did a motion to discuss. Do we need to do anything else on that, Andrea? I'm still learning all this motiony stuff. Now we're.
No, because I mean, we could, I mean, we vote, no, we're good because we, we did a motion and there's nothing to vote for. We just discussed. Yeah.
So I, thank you, everybody. I think, I think you all, I think we, we, everybody had great thoughts on this. And I think we, we do want to take our time and make sure that we cover all our bases. So thank you for that. And thank you, Carrie, for, Carrie Wade, for speaking earlier and for agreeing to take one of the pups should we decide to go that route and because it is a big commitment. So next order of business is our future meeting. And our next meeting is on February 8th. And other than that, our next thing on the agenda is adjourned. Oh, Andrea Wadsworth.
I just want to note something. And I think, oh, Amy Putton's still here, which means her daughter's still here. On January 30th of this month, there is a school committee represent, representative training, like a retreat. And so I would advocate, obviously, we want to love, we'd love to send our students. But I would love that if we could cover the cost of either their mileage for their parents to drive them down or something so that the, the students can participate with other students from across the, the state. I know there's some people coming, going from Pittsfield. So maybe we get some countywide stuff going.
Yeah, I think Greg, Mike sent that over to Greg earlier this week. So yeah, that would be great. Yes, Greg's saying, yes, he did. Yeah, I would love for you guys to be able to go.
If I could, I might suggest on that, that if we, if Principal Brigetti maybe puts feelers out sooner than later, but who might be interested next year, as we know that Emma is waving in a few months so that we can sort of build some sustainability and get somebody trained and, and sort of prepared for the role for next year. That might be advantageous.
That would be fantastic.
Awesome.
We've got some great people.
Yes, we, we've been lucky. There will be a Zoom link so that definitely you can do that. Sometimes it's the experience as being in the room. But the, the students have to be fully vaccinated. So just let people know that, fully vaccinated.
Ginger just said it's on the student government's agenda for tomorrow. Good job, Ginger.
Thank you, Ginger.
Okay. So other than that, the only thing we have left to do is I need somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you give us one last roll call, please?
Mr. Robyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuscherick?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Larmen?
Yes, look at that puppy.
Is that one of the puppies?
Mr. Nichols?
This one is mine.
Mr. Nichols?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadsworth?
In the next meeting, we bring our dogs. Can we, that'd be like one of the things. So yes.
I'll just wave at them all.
No, we're gonna, I'm gonna drop you off an animal.
I was going to say Andrea's going to give you one of hers.
Give you a horse.
That's right. And, and I think if we take a dog, we should be allowed to have mini horses.
Bring a goat.
Goats are very loving. Goats are very loving. And they eat Christmas trees. So they're good for the environment.
Your daughter used to bring your goats in to visit me when I was at the high school.
You are right. And when I rescued dogs, we had a blind, one eyed Shih Tzu that we would bring it to St. Mary's and it would listen to the kids and walk around to find him. It'd hit the desk, you know, and bounce back. But he was lovely.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for working so hard this evening. And thank you to the audience for sticking with us. And I will see you all later. We are adjourned at 8:36.